Mine did that after I got logged in.
Yeah.
Then it then go down to the right and click the little icon first.
Like the internet?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was disconnected.
And then go to connect and then SO student.
This one?
Yep.
Oh, now it's okay there.
Yes, sir, you need to get in there twice. Okay, yours?
Okay.
It was up when I got here and I just got it. That was just mine. I opened it up and it's been black.
I think you're just plugged in. Let's see.
Where you clicked in?
Oh, now she's gone.
So I think I pulled the.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Maybe I just need to put these.
It was thinking. Click on the SO student. You'll probably have to do it later again. And then login. And then once you get in, you might have to choose SO student again, but thank you for giving it. Or let me know if it doesn't work.
Always gotta remember I have to scroll. Better than I do.
On your personal.
Yes. I like this.
Did it work?
Well, no, I think I gotta login again or the SO student again.
Just click that SO student. Yes. There you are. Switching out servers and switches and everything this summer and then these things haven't been on since that's happened.
Greg's coming. Kristen no.
Kristen no.
Okay.
Great. I think yes. Oh, I didn't check.
It's five thirty. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sorry about that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we have the five school board basics. Put students first.
Follow the law and your own policy.
Sorry. Respect the chain of command.
Base decisions on shared objective information.
Operate in the public eye.
Okay. And next we will, um, I'll also just review what our mission statement is at Sibley O'Cheaton Schools. We build partnerships to challenge minds, to invest in community, and to embrace life. So it seems we have no visitors. We will move on to our consent items. Were there any questions on any of those items?
I'm just sending, I didn't get the additional bills printed off. I'm emailing them just standing right now.
Okay.
Possibly.
Possibly, Zoe said.
I just sent it. Sorry.
All right, I just sent it to them, Kendra. I'll put it on the board here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hail your failures or maintenance.
That was to do some scrubbing repairs on, I think, all of them. Two or three of the scrubbers. Some middle school math textbooks. Huddle is our, um, what we use for the athletic football and volleyball, like the stats, all of that. There's more to it than just the stats, but, um, that's the, that purchase. Game one, the is football uniforms. Frigitech is to repair the outdoor freezer that was damaged in the, when that windstorm came through. So that's most of what that is.
Did we get some insurance on that or not?
Still working on it.
Still working on that.
We literally just got that through today to put the order on it, so.
Okay. All right. If there are no questions, do I have a motion to approve the?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Second? I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we will go on to our superintendent report.
Really tried to put things on here outside of what we're gonna talk about tonight, um, and what we have talked about. There's Kristen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Put things on there that outside of what we're, we've been talking about or haven't talked about tonight, so, um, did some work in the last month of finalizing some contracts with the AA and their new parameters and how they're doing things. We talked about it last month, but finalized some of those things since that meeting. Been spending a lot of time on the paperwork and getting things ready for our new staff members. The biggest update is they're to the interview stage, waiting for the actual paperwork to come in. Have them corresponding with a realtor in town for residents, so, um, they're basically working on the final date to get their passports and then airplane tickets and move in, so that's all positive. We're excited for that. Starting the plans for the initial kickoff for the fall when staff get back and things like that. And our district goals, um, which we'll touch on later here in the meeting. Financial viability, a lot of times on the preparations, visit logic meetings and then getting ready for the start of the year and then wrapping up the last fiscal year and projections and things like that. Like I've said, you always have your feet in three years where we're still finishing last year. We're just starting this year and then we're starting to project to the next year, so, um, doing a lot of work with that and prep for this coming year.
Okay. Any questions for Stan? All right, board committees?
Finance and facilities did not meet in the policy. We met virtually a couple of weeks ago to review the policies we're presenting tonight.
And recognition of excellence.
Yeah, really. So in the last month, um, the recognition of excellence in softball. Haley Gakey was Sulin Conference Honorable Mention. And in baseball, Kane Julius was Sulin Conference First Team All-Conference. And Carter Voss was Sulin Conference Honorable Mention, so congratulations to all three.
Good. Okay, moving on to the discussion items. Two-minute board policy in one last moment.
So some other discussion things, I was keeping this simple, but I put on here paying for educational, education, excuse me, for staff licensure and endorsements. This came through in like a superintendent chat and explaining that. We at times, especially when we've asked staff to pick up a class that they needed an endorsement for and so on, might work with them to pay for their, um, training or education for that when they're adding something. As an example, I think I shared this last spring, but with Lisa is picking up some of those tag, Lisa Lodi, excuse me, our librarian, picking up those tag duties. We asked her to do that, so picking up those, um, costs for those classes, I think it was four classes and, minimal compared to some, but that's something that's becoming a trend in education more and more. There's some areas, schools that hadn't done before that before and are asking about that because they're like, okay, we have this open, a school is asking, we have this open sped position. We had one applicant, but they don't have a sped license. And they're asking us to pay for that or others doing that and everyone's responding yes because they hadn't historically done that before, but they're like, if we say no, we don't have an applicant and we say yes. So just kind of putting that out there and making people aware. Some schools have policies, some have backed off on that. And what we've done historically in the past, I've only done that when we've needed to or it's to our benefit to have someone who can add a class rather than looking for, um, hiring a new staff member or something along those lines. But those have happened in the past, but it's not just someone asks us to pay for it. It's something that benefits obviously the school, so just more of an FYI with that. That's something that we do do if you get asked about it.
What does something like that typically cost like?
Like the tag is, there's a, there's programs that'll do that relatively cheaply, efficiently. I don't know what the word I want to use there, but, um, some programs that maybe aren't as widespread, they might have to go online and get their credits through like U and I online or Iowa where it's gonna be a little bit more costly per credit hour, so that, so then it'll, then it'll vary. I want to say the tag one, fourteen hundred bucks or something like that, a couple hundred bucks each class, something along those lines. But some of them can be a few thousand dollars depending on what course of sequence they're, they need for classes and things like that.
Become a special ed teacher.
Like if they were starting from scratch, yeah, you know what I mean?
Your teacher, you're just gonna have your special ed.
Right, that's what I meant. Like you had no special ed classes versus someone who maybe was halfway there. Then that's gonna be, um, something that's gonna probably take place over two years because they're not gonna get it done in a year and then they're gonna get like emergency licensure from the state. You know, you can show good cause that we have a teacher with a license, but they don't have the endorsement. So then you can get an emergency licensure and show they're working towards it. They can get a temporary one if they're over halfway working towards it. So then, then there'd be more costs with that prorated over time. Usually those arrangements though, we do, they pay for it upfront and then once they turn in the, um, transcript for it to show that they successfully completed it, then they get reimbursed. That way you're not paying for something that they don't complete. That's generally how the arrangements are made. And like I said, doesn't apply in all situations, but there are times when you're short staff. That's what you gotta do.
Moving on to IASB training.
So just put this on your calendars and working with Luann, kind of a follow-up to that May work session that we had and then some of the work I'm gonna talk about here on the next bullet point here with Luann. But on September tenth, twenty twenty-five, we can do more details, but let's just plan on five thirty. That's worked in the past with her, um, previously, but we'll plan on that night in kind of a continuation from that end of May work session that we had with our district goals and things like that. In finalizing things with her that worked on her calendar, so she put that down. Um, it's one of the dates after the school year it started.
Okay. Board and district goal alignment that we worked on.
Okay, so it's two sheets, so you should have two. And this is attached, but I also printed it out. It's attached as image files on there, so this is no different. There we go. So most of this is template from IASB and then filling in with things that we discussed from our work session last. I think we started in November, that we did a few, I think that was November when we did that. What month? Whatever that was, last fall, we did that with her and then we followed up this May. And then as we talked about at the end of that May work session, putting that together to get some alignment on, on some goals and things like that. So other than we maybe strengthened a few words or put some verbs at the beginning, this is pretty much straight from what we discussed in those big flow charts that we had. So linking down to Sibley O'Cheaton Schools, we build partnerships to challenge mind, invest in community, embrace life, and talking about our goals for the next three to five years. And we talked about focusing in three areas. Our excellence in students' learning, positive district culture, financial stability, and points that we would look for within that. So, um, things that were labeled in those work sections or identified, I should say, was striving for improvements in performance in math and ELA. Ensure students are prepared for the next level and focusing on all, or on the needs of all students, including subgroups. Those are all things we identified at that May work session. Positive district culture, we talked about attracting and retaining valuable employees. Build a united and supportive team, promoting a sense of belonging among employees and promoting a sense of belonging among students. I think that was from both sessions. And then the financial stability is monitoring student enrollment, understanding the diversity in our own community and making decisions for sustained excellence. Which moves down to mine, our goals here for the next three years and that carries on to the next page. You know, we've talked about how those go back and forth to my goal, supporting student growth and literacy in math. These should look very similar to you or familiar, promoting staff retention engagement, ensuring financial viability of the district. And your goals, looking at your priorities, identifying and asking building team and administration to set and report goals in ELA and math scores. Focusing on communicating district successes and accomplishments, that's one of the things we said, um, at our last meeting. And monitoring our UAB balance to both short and long term. And then that flows down to in our evaluation, as we've discussed, those are things we had filled out before. But how, how is the superintendent doing? How do we know that? Looking at evaluations based on those golden IS, goals, excuse me, in ISB guidelines. Doing those formal evaluations and quarterly reviews, those are things we've talked through from the board. How, how is the board doing? How do we know? Well, we're gonna look at and review our academic data and scores. Talk about like as we did this spring, some exit interviews, um, attending cultural events like many of you done in the past. And I'm mentioning here like we did the kickoff at the beginning of the year last year, doing those type of things and staying on top of those financial reports and projections. So we kind of, I just kind of summarized and put that in a flow chart, um, based off what we had talked about. Overall, how does that structure look based on, to you guys, based on our conversations?
Looks like we talked about. Somebody put it together too.
Yeah.
Please follow.
And then on those board goals, specifically on the second page there where it comes down and talking about asking building and team administration to set and report goals, those are things where we can get specific from our level that we had mentioned. So maybe kicking off the year as we start the year, um, working into this where they'll set goals in their building specific to maybe ELA and math, right? And those things that they can report on that specifically throughout the year, okay? Here's, here was our goal in ELA to improve by X or this many students proficient. Or, you know, I don't want to limit them by giving a suggestion tonight, but they'll make some goals. I envisioning this and then, um, our MN can report on that, you know, midpoint through the year, at the end of the year and use that. We can talk about and focus on those successes and accomplishments like we had mentioned and, and continuing to focus on and maybe have a stronger focus on our UAB and the other balances, both short and long term. So we can use that at our level and then present to you guys at the big level. And then our work on the tenth would strengthen this, follow up, questions, you have ideas? And maybe help support us as we develop that at more the building level moving forward. That's kind of the idea on that meeting. These aren't set in stone, but based on what we did, so thoughts? Tear apart, whatever you. And questions?
I think that's what we had for the last meeting and actually the meeting before that too, when we met, they all kind of synced together, so.
We're just kind of connecting and we had a lot of, you know, those flow charts from the last meeting and from the December one and then putting that and just kind of tying it in to make it fit was more the, the channel, I don't know if the challenge is the right word, but the, the job to make it look together. I tried to get it on one page, but it looked very cluttered, so. That's why it's spread out over two.
I think when we need to get on the, in September, we can go over it through then and.
Yes.
Maybe narrow stuff down.
And yeah, we could be more, like I said, nothing set in stone here. We want to change some ordings or strengthen or flip something around. We can easily do that on that night.
Luann does a good job guiding that conversation too. So that's good. Anybody else?
So are we good with the start on that?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll share that with Luann and that'll drive some of our, um, conversation content that evening.
Okay. All right, we will move on to the FY twenty-four audit report.
Kendra summarized this. We got this, uh, we can have that?
Yeah, maybe. I'll just highlight a few things. So page seven has, um, they include twenty twenty-four financial highlights. You know, it shows your, how our revenues increased and expenditures increased as well. Yeah, you can, you can read through that part. Um, I think you guys already kind of knew that. So page fifteen, they always point out economic factors bearing on the district. They're pretty much the same as we always have. Costs increase, you know, our largest cost is salary and benefits. It's a concern that we could have declining enrollment in future years. We're hoping that we're level, you know, studying out, but that's always a concern. And then, um, allowable growth or supplemental state aid wasn't quite what we had hoped it would be. So that obviously affects things. Page fifty-eight in the, towards the back is, um, shows our activity fund balances of the different clubs and, um, accounts. Some of them end up being, we spending, we spend more money than we have more expenditures in revenue and, you know, some things we just don't have enough revenue or any revenue for that matter, so, um, those we usually zero out at the end of the year. So that just kind of goes, goes over the revenues and expenditures for the year. The next page has the revenues and expenditures over all of our funds. So you can kind of see the total revenue is eleven million, total expenditures was thirteen million. And then, um, page sixty-seven, um, they talk about our, the findings of the audit. Segregation of duties is the, is when we've had that on there every year is that I've been here for sure and many years before that. We've been working to separate some things and have oversight at least. It's hard with a small, not very many people in our office, but we're doing what we can for that.
Maybe, uh, what's one of the things we, as an example, changed this past year?
You looking over journal entries, that type of thing. Those are mainly things that I do, but Stan's been reviewing them. Some of it is that we, you know, the same person, um, takes the money to the bank, takes the, enters the deposit, you know, all of that stuff. So we're just trying to have some oversight over that. It's really not what they're looking for. They'd like to have a different person do each step of, you know, you, you take the money, you take it to the bank. Another person enters it into the general ledger, another person reconciles. We just don't have that many people, so, um, but we're working on it. Page sixty-eight, certified budget. So we did amend our budget last year. However, um, we ended up over in, um, the support services and other expenditures because of our bus leases was the main, um, thing. They, we got new bus leases last year and the auditors ended up having, when they were doing the audit, not when they were here doing their, um, field work. They had to do some entries for that and then it put us over in the expenditures. So that one, I was surprised that was on there. Sales tax. We had paid some sales tax on district credit cards. This is something that is really hard to get away from when you're, when somebody's traveling and you don't have a tax exempt form with you to not pay tax at, you know, McDonald's or wherever. But, um, we, we try as much as we can. Any, any of our purchases that we, that we're purchasing, you know, that we know ahead of time that we're purchasing will do a tax exempt, even if, if they require a credit card payment, but, um, that was on there this year. And then the late fees, interest charges, that was, um, on one of the credit cards that they didn't receive the payment in time. I think we had a late board meeting and it was due, you know, it takes a week to ten days from when we mail it to, when they process it. So I think that's why it was on there, unfortunately. Otherwise, I think that's all of the findings that we had this year. Any questions? I know that was really quick. You can take these home and read through them if you want to. Otherwise, it was pretty, a pretty normal audit. And if you find something later, if you have questions on it, you can always ask too.
Any questions from anybody right now, otherwise? Get home, look through it. It's a good idea to do that. Okay, school board election.
Just putting this on here as a reminder, school board elections are this fall, so districts one, three, and four are up for the election. That would be Laurel's, Greg and Jamie's districts. And they haven't had the full information guide out yet from ISB, but, um, they have their initial one out. The elections are on November twenty-fourth. And in this packet of information, it just talks about for the basics for you or anyone, what the school board election is and, um, how you can be a candidate, the nomination papers. What I will draw attention to is on page two, talks about the qualifications and all of that. The filing period, nomination papers must be filed with the school secretary during the filing period, which would be Kendra. They cannot be filed before or after the filing period. The period is Monday, August twenty-first, which is also, or twenty-fifth, excuse me, is also our first day of school. It's the first day you can turn in papers, um, with her. That doesn't mean you can't work on it ahead of time, but that's the first day you can officially turn them in. And they have to be turned in by five PM on Thursday, September eighteenth. And then we take them from there and bring them to the courthouse. And so it goes through that, but just be aware of that filing period, the twenty-fifth through the eighteenth, so that's a little less than a month. I wanted people to be aware of that and then it goes through the, the rest of the explanation. I'm not gonna read through the rest of the.
I have the packets printed out for you too, whoever would like them.
Yep.
I had a quick question on that, Stan.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, in addition to having this on the agenda, has the election been advertised in the paper or any other form to let people know what spots are open?
It has not yet. They usually advise us, like I said, the ISB hasn't sent their, um, support thing out, but they usually say start that right before leading up to when the, the papers can officially be turned in.
Gotcha. I was just curious how.
Nope, you're right. They have not. It has not yet.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, moving on to new business, consider approval of RA, RSAI legislative priorities.
So RSAI is reminders Rural School Advocates of Iowa and they provide support and, um, advocate on our behalf. Each year they're asking us to pick the legislative platform. And what I will do, based on our responses, go through that. I have a paper version and then I will turn that in. There is obviously, I put this on as a PDF, so you can go through the beginning part. It's just showing you exactly what I'm gonna go through. This one basically lists some of their top legislative priorities and then asks us to rate them. So it's not, the other one, if you remember from years past, has a whole list of them for ISB and then we have to pick our top four, which we'll do in a second. This one is more of a liker scale rating and then we submit that at the end. This one is more of a Liker scale rating, and then we submit that at the end. So the beginning is demographic information, which I'll take care of when we submit. So really, we're jumping to number six here. And we'll just kind of, I think, talk through this together and then I will submit kind of on our consensus here. It says adequate school resources. And then there's, starting in question six, and it goes through about question sixteen, so eleven of them roughly, that we'll rate. So adequate school resources, including the formula for pure per pupil funding, TSS, which is the teacher salary supplement, and other categories, transportation equity, supplemental waiting. How important is it for RSI to advocate for this issue in the upcoming legislative session for your district? One is low in this rating scale and seven's high. And like I said, we don't have to rate them one through seven. We rate each one individually. So where on that scale do we want to put this?
Say hi.
Hi. For us, this is a higher priority, absolutely. Should I put it as a seven?
Yes.
Okay. Staff shortages, including loan forgiveness to grow your own programs, emphasis on critical shortage positions, licensure flexibility. And I was even talking about a little bit at the beginning when you're short licensure and different ways around that. Fifteen years ago, people wouldn't have been paying for that, but we are now. How important is it for RSI, RSI to advocate for the issue in the upcoming legislative session for your district addressing staff shortages? Very high on that.
High end. High end.
What do you, a seven, six, seven?
Seven.
Okay. Seven, I put it at. Quality preschool, um, what they're getting at here is places that maybe it's not offered through the school or if it is not, not transitional kindergarten. That's not what we're talking about TK. They're talking about just the preschool, making that, um, full day or include full waiting for them because they're weighted to half a student because they come halftime. How important is this to advocate for that? We currently have a preschool, morning and afternoon sessions, just as an FYI.
Yeah, I was gonna say kind of more in the middle. We don't want to lose that.
We don't want to lose it, right?
Mm-hmm. High would probably not a seven.
Five?
Five.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Local school board authority, trusting school boards and educational professionals to make the best decisions for students and community. How important is it for RSI to advocate for this issue in the cupping, upcoming legislative session? A little background on this. It's coming from the context of those that have been in the seat for a while, that there's less and less things that local school boards actually have control or decision-making over. That's where this is coming from. More recent legislation is, in the recent years, has seemed to gone from, from their perspective in the trend of taking less and less decisions away from boards and putting it at the state level. So that's where this is coming on local board authority is what they're getting at. As, not as an only example, but as an example, even choosing curriculums, right? Now we're, even in elementary and math, ELA curriculums, we have a state approved list that we have to pick from, right? And if you don't, you're not meeting state standards. There, there's another example of less authority than maybe what you would have had fifteen or twenty years ago where a school could have gone through and evaluated the curriculum and decided this is the best fit for us. That's an, that's an example of what we're getting at.
I think our local authority is pretty important.
Is that a five? Do we want to go a little higher, higher than that, lower?
I'd say five or six.
Five or six? How about let's put it as six?
Yeah.
Public school priority, what that means is if private schools receive state funding, there should be a level playing field regulations and accountability. They, public schools should be held harmless for dollars diverted from public schools. They're also talking about if anyone's receiving state funding, they should have the same accountability measures and the same reporting measures, because that's not true. So that's kind of providing a little more insight of what they're getting at here. So if someone's receiving state funding in terms of educationally, that they're, they have the same reporting measures and same accountability measures across the board.
Seems fair.
Mm-hmm.
I'd say.
So it's different than these vouchers then?
That's in essence where it's coming from. So the vouchers, you have X many students coming, and so now your school, private school, X gets this state funding. Okay, so they're receiving state funding. Should they have the same requirements and accountability measures that a public school would have?
Yeah.
That's what they're getting at. Yep, right on the ball.
I think it's a higher number two there.
A six?
Yeah.
Okay. Increasing students' needs, including poverty and mental health, including specific resources for these. How important is it for RSI to advocate for this? I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Five, six, based on our own needs, I'm kind of getting at?
Yeah, I would say six.
Okay.
Yeah.
Whole grade sharing and reorganization incentives, um, to reinstate them as some are expiring. They're talking about districts where maybe they don't combine, but they do whole grade sharing. So maybe District A has kids in grades K-six, and then seven, twelve, even though they're an independent district, they're going to another district. Um, there's some districts that you think are together, but they're actually two separate districts, even though they compete as a moniker, as an example. And they're talking about the incentives and, and financial incentives, incentives to do that. That's what this is getting at. How important is that to us?
I'd say lower.
Right, yeah. Right. We'll put it as a
Three?
Three, two, yeah.
Three, two, three?
Three, okay. Operational sharing incentives, and I'm gonna switch that. I'll put it as a two. Operational sharing incentives, right size the waitings for positions and consider some outside of the twenty-five student camp. So we've talked about this, for instance, AMOS is the transportation position. We share that with HLP, provide some resources for them, right? So they're paying for part of that salary, and then we get four additional students of waiting for that. Jordan Manning's position, he comes here a day a week. We're getting two students for that. That wouldn't count in the cap, but that's, that's what they're talking about. Trying to
Chrissy?
Chrissy, thank you for HR and the services she provides with HLP. We get four students. So that's what operational sharing is. There's other positions where you can do that. I want to be careful because the people think I'm giving a hint and I'm not. There's other positions where you can do that and you can explore down the road, looking at, um, doing that where you get, not only do you get the benefit of some of that cost of their salary shared at the other district, you get students, additional student funding for that. You can do that with, I'm just saying these, these examples. I don't want anyone to think I'm hinting. I'm just giving examples because there's a list of them. You can do that for school business officials, whether that's your SBO like us, whenever we have one. Some schools do it because they have more, they're big enough to have more than one official, right? So they have two people in the office. Maybe they share one of them as an example. That's four students. You can do that with superintendent. That's nine students. I'm trying to think of ones that are out there that we don't utilize, maintenance directors. I think you, I think there's a kitchen one. What's that?
Librarian, do we do that one here?
You, you can share that, but you, you can share that one, but you don't get students back on a librarian. Yep.
There's like school resource officer.
School resource officer, thank you, yes.
There's all kinds of.
Yep. Under that, you can, so traditionally you can't for teachers.
Okay.
Like you can share a teacher, people do that all the time, but you don't get students back. This would be for anything that where you get students back. That's what the, it's getting at. So making sure that it's, what they're advocating for is that, that that's maintained and maybe bumping up that cap, because there's a max number of students you can get. And that's what, that's why they're talking about bump that up, the cap up, so thoughts there?
I like that's a higher.
I think so too. I mean, we'd love to see higher enrollment, be better to get it. I actually have students in the building.
Right. But as an example, let's say we continue to share some of those positions we are now, and they cut it. We're gonna lose twelve students of funding in one year.
So Jordan Manning's position, we do get?
We get, yep, we get two students for that one. Amos, we get four. Chrissy's, we get four. So just right there, that's ten. So let's say they cut this. Everything else holds far. We lose ten students the next year. You know what I mean? Yeah. Six?
Yeah.
Six? Okay. Formula equity, continue to close the gap between high and low district cost per pupil amounts. How important is it for this? So some districts have built in from way back when a higher district cost per pupil. So that amount that we get per pupil, some districts get a higher amount. We had that for us until about two years ago. And then every few years, sometimes they'll do an adjustment for that and bring it up, and they had done enough adjustments now that we're at the state cost per pupil. We were higher, but there's still districts that are higher. So when, when we get, I'm just making up a number, seventy-five hundred per student, they might be getting seventy-five hundred and ten dollars per student. So that's what this is talking about, is putting in legislation, closing that gap so statewide, that's the same per pupil. And it's less than half that are different. I think it's maybe twenty percent, but there's still our schools that, from historical standpoint, have a higher cost per student. So how important is that one, formula equity?
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Or lower.
What about like a?
Three or four?
Three or four, yeah, three or four.
Sounds like kind of middle of the road type.
We'll do a four, kind of the middle, indifferent. Bond issue dates and other restrictions, allowing more special election dates. Right now, you're limited when they can. And making it a simple majority approval for bonds rather than the sixty percent plus one. And then right now, there's two levels. Since this is kind of foreign to us, because we, we don't have a general obligation or we don't have debt bonds, but some districts do. You, if we were gonna do one today, we'd actually have to have two votes. We'd have to approve the debt at two seventy, two dollars and seventy cents, and then approve bringing it from there up to four oh five to max out. That's what those mean. It's foreign to us because we just don't have one in place. So that would be adding two dollars and seventy cents to our tax rate. I'm not hinting this, just giving this as an example, right? Or four dollars and five cents, that would go to pay down your debt bonds. Those are your only options right now. So they're, they're asking about having more dates where you could vote that in, because right now it's about one time a year. And then, um, some of the other restrictions taken away. How important is that to our district?
Probably pretty low if we're not utilizing it right now.
For us right now, it is. I would agree.
Medium low.
Yep. I'll put that as a three?
Sounds good.
AEA services and support, provide adequate funding for AEA's, ensure adequate resources for stable staffing and needs, and including school improvement. How important is it to advocate for them? And a lot of this was put in place in the year when there was uncertainty with the AEA's and then kind of some of the changes came through into where they're at right now. That's just historically why this one's in here, is it's the last one. To me, if where they're at and they stay where they're at, we're okay, that'd be kind of the middle of the road. If we think they need to go back and have more services at the AEA and provide us with some more, then we'd put that higher. But just kind of, if what they're doing right now, which is basically providing a few days in general services each year that we have to contract for now, but they're supposed to cover all our special ed needs, that's kind of where they're at right now in the really simple stated.
Do you feel like we're getting the coverage this last year that we need or?
I would word it this, that we did not get the coverage we did before.
No.
Because they're not as available.
Right.
Now, did maybe, sometimes we use their support when we didn't need to on every issue, very possibly. But I don't know where that medium is, because I know there were times now where it's, okay, now it's gonna cost X more dollars for them to come.
Right.
And it was a lot harder some of the times because they have less staff. So you can just say come Wednesday, and they're, oh, I'm already booked, which is, that's a bigger issue right now. And your bigger districts are just basically keeping their dollars and doing that position in-house instead of passing it on the AEA. My opinion would be upper middle.
Yeah, I was gonna say like
Yeah. I would like that.
So is that scenario you just said, is that helping us maybe a little bit then? Because then the bigger schools aren't utilizing that and maybe giving us a little bit better chance of getting some, not really.
It helps a little bit on one hand, but also if they're not, if they're keeping all their dollars as we are, then that's less for the AEA, and that's, and that's why they're having, I can't, yeah, they're having cuts with their general services. I wanted to say, coming in this next, don't quote me, but it was something crazy, like they're gonna have thirty less people. Not on the special ed side, but on the general ed side than they did two years ago, or thirty-five less people serving our whole AEA. But we're also in a unique situation, like in our AEA Sioux City, just their budget alone of what can, what was contributing to that is equal to how many, I mean, almost the rest of the entire AEA, you know what I mean? So just right there. That's what's unique where most other AEA's, you have a couple of large ones like that, but we don't have anyone else in our area near the scope or size of Sioux City as an example, you know what I mean? So their choice significantly impacts everyone else. Five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That covers that one. Okay, moving on, ISP legislative priorities? Oh, my, my bad.
Yeah.
I, I did realize that.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the, um, formula that, or not really formula, but the ratings that we gave on that form?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the RSI legislative priorities. That's completed.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was passed. Consider approval of IASB legislative priorities.
Okay, so the first portion of this packet, really you gotta jump to like page, is a summary of what went on last year. So you're really jumping, the first twelve pages are that. It's page thirteen, but it's relabeled page one. And the top of it says twenty twenty-five legislative resolutions. It looks like this, if you're scrolling through, it's roughly page thirteen. It says page one on the bottom, but, okay? That's where it starts, and what we have to pick is, we have to pick four priorities. Now, there's different numbered ones, but then they have subheadings. So like under number one, there's student achievement, so that's one of them. Then it says preschool. There's another, early literacy, English language learners. Does that make sense? So there's several headings in here, okay? That we can go through. Some are similar to, to last year. I don't know that everyone is. The four that we picked last year are on here this year again, um, that we can change. So I, I will tell you what we picked last year, and then I'll give a suggestion on how we can move forward on this. We picked student achievement. On the next page, under two, we picked teacher recruitment and licensure. We picked mental health, which was one of the sub-things under, um, point four. And we picked supplemental state aid, which is one of the points under point seven. You know, like number eight has one point under it, number seven has, so it varies like seven points. So it can, it kind of varies by whatever. I can give a suggestion and then I can listen to your feedback. If you want to take a moment and go through and maybe pick your four, and then we'll just read them. And the top vote getters?
Sure.
That'd be one suggestion. I've marked them myself. We can go, that's kind of how we did it last year. If you liked that, we can do that. Does that sound good to everyone? Give you a few minutes to read through. You list your four. I kind of cheated because I had a chance to do this ahead of time. I kind of cheated because I had a chance to do this ahead of time. Does anyone need more time? What I'll do is, I'm going to maybe say the, different than I did last year, the four that I picked and why, and then we'll just go through in random. I don't have a method to go through, but ask yours, then we'll just go top tally. Does that sound okay? I did under number two, teacher recruitment and licensure.
So you're making these in order then, or?
I, no, just picked top four. I didn't, I wouldn't put them in this order, but I'm just picking the top four. Because I, I did check, that's all they're asking us for, is to give them their four. I didn't do student achievement because I did local accountability and decision-making, going back to the authority of the board. And I think that could fall under there. What we're going back with RSA is local board control and increasing the accountability and decision-making power of the local board. So I put that as the second choice, not necessarily ranked. Supplemental state aid, under number seven. And then I did under seven, two down there, property taxes. I just think with the legislation that was proposed, but that didn't get passed this past year in terms of property tax reform. I'm not saying that in itself is bad, but just being aware and having people advocating so that it does, it holds the public schools harmless in that. Have reform, that's great, but we don't want to end up with less than we had before, in essence. So those were my four. I'll maybe start here. Kristen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Did you get a chance?
Yes, I had the property taxes you just mentioned also.
Okay. Under number seven there, that property taxes? Okay? What else did you have?
I think that'd be an important one to make sure we have in there, I guess. Or you just go around the room and?
I'll go, yes, yep, I will go around. What other ones did you have, Kristen?
Me? Okay, because I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Okay, there we go, yes, yep.
So I got property taxes?
So I got property taxes.
What other three did you have?
Okay, I had the mental health again.
Yep.
And then I had the teacher recruitment that you mentioned. And I also had the local accountability that you mentioned.
Yep, got it. Okay. Thank you.
I had the same ones.
So teacher recruitment?
Yeah.
Okay? Mental health?
Yep.
Local accountability?
Yep.
And then the property taxes?
Yep.
Okay?
I had supplemental student aid. Teacher recruitment and licenses.
Okay, teacher recruitment, I heard, I know where that one is. Supplemental state aid.
I think that's number seven.
There we go, yep. Okay?
Student achievement.
Yep.
And English learner.
Yep, got it. That was on Patreon, because I looked it up.
I had the mental health one.
Okay.
Student achievement.
Okay.
The supplemental state aid.
Okay.
And the local accountability decision-making one.
Okay.
I had teacher recruitment, mental health, local accountability, and property taxes.
Okay. Student achievement at two. Teacher recruitment had five. Pretty sure that will be one of them. Mental health had four, that could be. Local accountability and decision-making had five. Supplemental state aid had three. Property taxes had four. And that's it, so. So then it'd be property taxes and mental health. Would be our top, and no ties, that makes it easier. So teacher recruitment, local accountability, mental health, and property taxes. So those would be our top four, so we would just need a motion.
Yep, is there a motion to approve those four choices?
Make a motion to approve the IASB legislative priorities as listed.
Is there a second? A second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is passed. Consider approval of increase in substitute teacher pay rates.
So we're looking at increasing our substitute teacher pay rate, as stated here. And a number of years ago, not a number, a few years back, we raised it, but now we have kind of moved down. And so in looking at other districts, I've reached out to a few superintendents, and Kendra has done likewise in her group with other SBOs. These are the recommendations we're making. It's being recommended to increase our daily substitute rates from a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty-five. Being recommended to increase our long-term substitute pay from two hundred to two twenty. And increase the teacher, so this is like when a teacher has a prep and we're asking them to not have their prep uncovered for someone else, that's what that means. To increase that from thirty to thirty-five. That's just at a different location than the others, that's why I put that one in there. It's in the teacher work rules.
Make a motion to approve increasing the substitute teacher pay rate to a hundred and forty dollars per day, long-term substitution rate to two twenty a day, and teacher class period substitute rate to thirty-five.
And I see I made an error, we should increase it to the teacher to a hundred and fifty-five. I put the old rate, my apologies there.
So move it to a hundred and fifty-five?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that is passed. Consider approval of twenty-five, twenty-six district depositories.
So this is something that has to be approved each year, now that we're in the new fiscal year. So Iowa State Bank, just what we house there would be general fund dollars, PEPAL save, some of our debt service, debt service sinking funds, Sibley State Bank for the activity and nutrition funds, and then ISJET, which don't ask me off the top of my head to say what the acronym is. I could probably come up with it, but.
Iowa School Joint Investment.
Joint, that's, that's what I can never remember. Iowa School Joint Investment Trust, which when we're dealing with some of our proceeds from the bond sale and paying things off, we might transfer it because they usually have a little higher rate. So those would be our three district depositories.
Okay. Is there a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six district depositories as presented.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And that is passed. Consider approval of new contracts.
Maria Olivera, as a paraprofessional, her sister currently works here, and that's who gave us the recommendation. And bilingual, so that'll be awesome. And then Austin Kruger, as a sub and activity sub bus driver. Confusing how that was worded, but as a sub route driver and activity bus driver to help with those, yep.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve these?
I'll make a motion to approve the new contracts as listed above.
Is there a second?
Clear.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that is approved. Consider approval of sharing agreement for soccer.
Nothing's changed with this, other than the timing Sheldon had asked. They're moving up, they're trying to get all their sharing agreements done at the beginning of the year rather than haphazardly through the year. So if you're like, we have, we done this in July before, you're correct, we have not. But they asked us to do that, and we don't have a problem with that. So it'd be for sharing soccer for the coming year.
Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the sharing soccer, the sharing agreement with Sheldon for soccer as it presented.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And that is passed. Consider approval of contract for project success with wit.
Basically, this doesn't change anything we've done, they've just asked us to fill that out. We do have a student on an IEP who graduated from Sibley Treen and enrolled there in their project, and they're just asking us to formally approve of the contract with that.
Is there a motion to approve that contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for project success with wit in Sioux City.
Clear.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is passed. Consider approval of purchase of painting robot.
So this is called the Robot Pro X, it's a painting robot. And what it would do primarily, we'd start with, it was, is, it would paint the football field. Right now, we have janitorial staff doing that and being short-staffed the last few years. Generally, in the fall, Greg spends about a day, one day per week, just on football field maintenance with painting and everything else like that. And if you remember, last fall, we did not always have an elementary janitor on staff, so that, so not only is he out doing that, we don't have someone on staff fulfilling that needs, and that takes them away from doing that. And it cuts down on a lot of other workers' late responsibilities. So that's where this would, down the road, we could entail, if interested, the baseball team could use that for their foul lines to paint, and likewise, the softball team. The cost of the robot is forty thousand fifty-five dollars. Pay for that out of PEPAL save. I visited with the boosters on this, and we would pay twenty, and they would pay anything above and over that. And they had approved that already, and I met with them on that.
Any questions?
So who will run it then, I mean?
Greg will, yep, Greg will get training on it. We've had Tony involved, so he'll make sure that it syncs with everything, and he's on board with that. Amy obviously be involved. Your biggest setup is the first time you do that, and that's where the most work is, because the lines don't just magically go down, there's pins underneath the field, and you search, and then you mark them and string them out for every five-yard line and all this. We just have to identify the corner in zones, and then it'll do everything else from there. But Greg would do that, it, it comes with, it would, on a tablet and a remote, so it could start. And if it stops, or it sends, it'll just stop if it runs out of paint or gets off track, and then it would send him alert, so he could do other things while it's painting. He doesn't necessarily have to sit there and just watch. He could clean the concession stands, as he said as an example, and prepare him for that night's game if they're painting on Thursday or something like that. Rather than just spending his whole time out there, he can do other tasks at the same time. And it paints much more accurately than a human could. We had it come for a demonstration, so myself, Amy Elser, Tony Beavers, Mike McCarty, Greg Greenfield was there. And then we had Travis, Mitch Cracus, Brett Doden from the boosters, and he's an assistant football coach. I thought we had ten people there at various points that watched this. And I said, if you have questions or whatever, before I presented the boosters, come watch. And when we were done, pretty sure everyone was on board. They did, they did initial painting on the practice field with the lines and so forth, because they hadn't been down yet, and so then, like, two, oh, Daryl Tuji was there. And like he said too, like, now we don't have to go and measure, and he just painted over the top of it, and you could do that each week. As an example, how much paint do you think it used? Just at a light spray, but how much paint in terms of cost do you think it used to paint both practice fields?
I'm not going to guess, I'm bad at guessing things.
I have no idea.
It costs, the, the cost of the paint that we used when the robot painted our fields was just under three dollars. Because it just does it much more efficiency with the mix, yeah. Yeah. Now, I'm being realistic, over the next six years, we're not going to recoup forty thousand dollars in, in pink. I'm not going to tell you that, because that's not going to be true. But you do spend significantly less on paint. He said you'll spend probably at least half, probably less than half, or up to half of what you did on paint, just because it's more efficient and it's a straighter line. And we did get a grant, that is in the quote that's attached there. There are a couple of other grants that we might, like I said, might win. We'll find out, that would also lower the cost after this quote here, they would give us credit for that. So we're not guaranteed to win those, but we can always hope. And there's a lot of other features that it can do that hopefully we can explore down the road, so. Other questions?
Like cover classroom?
Ideally.
Let's not replace people. Okay, any questions?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the painting robot.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And that is approved. First reading of board policies.
These policies were presented to the policy committee, and we just reviewed them remotely. Pretty much all of them were recommended changes from IASB based on legislative changes this spring and updating the policies to match those legislative changes. Can't think of anything that wasn't really, right?
No.
And it's been a while since we reviewed them, but I don't think there was anything that wasn't.
No.
Yeah.
Whoever makes a motion, please read those numbers.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the filing policies. One oh four, one oh four E one, one oh four E two, one oh four E three, two eleven, four oh two point oh two, four oh two point oh three, four oh five point oh two, four eleven point oh two, five oh one point oh three, five oh one point oh nine, five oh one point oh nine R one, five oh five point oh five, five oh seven point oh one, six oh three point oh one, and six oh three point oh five.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that is approved. Consider approval of L and L Builders pay application number three.
Yep. Pay application number three, from L and L, obviously, we're getting steeper into the project, so this pay application's. Pay application number three, from L and L, obviously we're getting steeper into the project, so this pay application's for nine hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. That would be paid out of the revenue bonds.
So they have any like checkpoints from each request, I guess, like the stuff's been done and?
Yep, yeah, generally, they're not submitting unless it's been ordered, like if we would have ordered. Drywall, right, and come in and it might not be installed, but they're, they're not going to submit that until we've ordered it, and it's arrived, and arrived, and then, or work completed if it's for labor.
Any questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment to L and L Builders as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is passed. Consider approval of L and L Builders pay application for middle school.
And this would be request number two, and this is specific for the middle school, high school work. And it's for five hundred sixty-seven thousand fifty-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
Make a motion to approve payment for L and L Builders for application number two of five hundred sixty-seven thousand fifty-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is passed. Consider approval of payments to SiteLogic.
Um, to SiteLogic, this one is for, I know, seven thousand one hundred and five dollars, significantly less, we gotta remember, we've been paying them throughout the year. Paid more to them upfront, so that's why theirs are less at this point.
Okay, is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment as presented to SiteLogic.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that is passed. Okay, next meeting.
August eighteenth at the High School IMC, that will be the week where we have all staff returning. So usually that's the one traditionally where we have the new teaching staff come and present, so hopefully most of them will be able to that night. They don't know that yet, but, well, September twenty-two, just a reminder, from, we moved that, approved that last month. It would have been the fifteenth, but we moved it back to the twenty-second. And then the twentieth of October is the October meeting, and then the work session is on September ten.
I will not be here for the work session, Tate has seen your pictures that night, so, I'm like, well, I can't really reschedule those, I tried. They really don't work.
Okay, talking points.
Highlights of the meeting, like we said, we want to continue to focus on the highlights and the positives when people ask us about our meetings, so. What things did you pull out?
Good audit report? Continue to get good ideas for legislative priorities for both of them?
No, there are a lot of good things, I will say, I'm appreciative of proving the painting robot, I think we're going to have some staff that are very appreciative of that, remember, so. And it, it is pretty cool. See it, to see it.
Very many who have.
Yeah, there are, the last, I know one year, I was going to say the last two years for sure, we've, we found the pins, but we've done our initial paint with a robot that we rented from another school, just because it helps out. So last year, it was either two years ago or last year, I can't remember if we've done it two years, but I know we rented one from Sioux Center, because they've had one. And I want, I want to say that was two years ago, maybe it was last year. And then maybe we used Centralion's last year to do the initial one, just because it's very labor intensive the first time you do it, when you're doing it with. The handheld machine and basically strings, and you're following along a stringer and so forth, and so you use that to line it up, and then we didn't use it after that, but you'd use that as your guide, basically, and so forth. So there are other areas, other area schools that have them, it's becoming more common, because it helps and it's more accurate. If you're football ref, you've talked to anyone who's football ref, probably have some stories of where.
Crooked lines?
Yeah, crooked lines are inaccurate, lines are numbers, because someone messed up.
So I know you gave us a report on Friday about these, the projects right now are on, on pace, and is that, I guess, is there more you want to?
Overall, they're on pace, they're, I'm going to get a better timeline tomorrow, and then I'm hoping to send out a, I mean, we're still planning to start school on time, nothing that's behind will affect that, we might have to work around a few things. But as of right now, they're, they're aware of when staff are coming. All staff are coming for those in-service dates and when students start, and so, I mean, I just talked to them today, and we're not planning on changing that. That's ultimately what people want to know. There might be some inconveniences around that, but we'll work through that. Hopefully I'll get a better idea and update some staff on that tomorrow. Can't send out last week, like we do that jumpstart, that's starting August four or whatever, but we're not going to use any elementary rooms, because they're not going to be ready, so we're going to have that all, even the elementary kids are going to come up to the middle school as an example. Is that a perfect scenario? No, but we can make it work.
Doors and drilling are coming along better, or still hold up?
Doors are coming along better, drilling's been a challenge, so, but I think they have some options, they're going to, I'm going to find out tomorrow where they're at, or some options to work around it if they're not, if they don't get everything done on time, so. We'll find out tomorrow.
Saturday you don't work anymore.
They're working Sunday morning when I was out on my walk. They're putting in the time, that's for sure. Okay. Um, last thing, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're sleeping here, or where's that part at?
Right there behind the TV.
Oh.